Call this regular meeting of the Library Board of Trustees to order today, Wednesday, June 14th. We'll now proceed to item two on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. Brianna, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
On flag day.
On flag day.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and a pure republic of rich standards, one nation under God, and there is a vote for the majority.
Well, now proceed to item three on the agenda, the adoption of the agenda. Daniza.
I mean that we adopt the agenda as is.
Okay, except we want to make a change on under discussion items number five, five number four, scratch the name Kim Roseman off and put Effie Williams in there. Did I pronounce that correctly? Effie Williams, make sure I pronounce it correctly. Effie Williams in that place there. I'll entertain a motion to accept the adoption of the agenda of Wednesday, June 14th, as presented and recommended. So much. Motion by Mr. Vanderwold. Second by Anna Dawn, that we approve the agenda of Wednesday, June 14th, as presented and recommended. Discussion. Objections. Motion carried. We'll now proceed to the call to the public. Daniza, do you have anybody?
No, not this time, Chairman.
Okay, we'll move on to item five, discussion items. Number one, security issues. Lieutenant Bermulis.
Hi, good morning, Board and others in attendance. There were a couple of calls too that we received at the library. Officers doing proactive police work, going identifying suspicious vehicles, suspicious persons, and dispersing them from the library. There was a theft reported at the library. Patron did come down to the police station and wanted to report a stolen cellphone. That was resolved, no report needed. The cellphone was located in the county, so even though he thought he lost it here, it was actually found somewhere else. Other than that, officers, like I said, continue to be proactive, identifying suspicious vehicles, suspicious people, and dispersing them from the library.
Lieutenant Bermulis, do you have an update on the last robbery from the roof, on any suspects or anything?
No, no, no update on that one. Like I did say last time, and I forgot to check on it, but I could check on it right now, and if I can, I'll come back and give you an update before the meeting is over. But I did believe that we did have a suspect, so I'll check on that and I'll be back to give you an update.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Brian?
No questions.
Jerry?
No questions.
Marva? Ed? Brianna? Lieutenant, thank you for your report, and if you come back right now, I'll go back to agenda item one, so you can come back to the podium and legally address us if you have that update.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Lieutenant. We'll move on to item two on the agenda, Sonoyta Building update. Daniza?
The project manager Juan Valderas was not able to be here today. He has a meeting in Benson. As I emailed the Board, I did email you the links and the bid packet. The pre-bid mandatory meeting will be next Wednesday, June 21st, at the Sonoyta Library at 2:00 PM. The Board is welcome to attend, and if you also, there's other dates on the packet there, and if you want to look through that, if you get, if you don't, if you're not able to go next Wednesday and have questions, I am able to email them to Juan. And if not, if you're there next week, you're also more than welcome to ask him any questions.
Brian?
Ms. Lopez, the Wi-Fi installation is going independent of the, by CenturyLink is going independent of the construction, the renovation of the building. Do you know anything about how that is progressing?
I do not know. It is going to be separate, but I'm not aware, but that's a good question for Juan.
Thank you.
Jerry?
No questions.
Marva? Ed? Brianna? Juanita?
Thank you, I look forward to attending that meeting next week.
Thank you, Daniza. We'll now move on to item three, Arizona State Library Summer Institute, Denise Ortega and Laura Rodriguez. Daniza?
Board members, I'd like you to welcome Denise, Library Supervisor Denise Ortega and Children's Coordinator Laura Rodriguez. They will do their Arizona Summer Library Institute presentation.
Good morning. You do have a packet, I did print it out because I know it can be hard to look at the fonts from the computer, so we did print it out for you. So like our director mentioned, Laura Rodriguez, Clarissa Martinez from Rio Rico, and myself got the opportunity to go to the Arizona Library Institute. It was a one-week training up in Prescott. We had the whole dorm experience, we were staying at the dorms, and we'll talk about a little bit of what the institute was. So at the institute, like I said, it was a week course. We had presenters and we connected with other libraries. In the institute, we were taught how to advertise our activities, the funding, expansion of community services, trainings for staff, and how to build connections with libraries from the state. Okay. Um, uno de los temas que nos enseñaron fueron cómo conseguir grants, cómo conseguir funding para la library. Este, primero tenemos que ubicar cuáles son las necesidades de nuestra comunidad y así poder ver cuáles son las, los grants a los que podíamos aplicar. Nos dijeron también dónde están, dónde poder encontrar esas, los grants, no, y como, tips cómo poder, pues aplicar a una de ellas. Para poder hacer programa, uno de los trainings que nos dieron eran cómo poder hacer actividades para adultos, niños y adolescentes. Este, para los adultos y adolescentes nos sugirieron hacer cosas artísticas, igual para los adultos, gardening, y para poder anunciar estos programas, nos sugirieron, para programas de adultos nos sugirieron hacer flyers impresos y ponerlos en tiendas, supermercados, clínicas, donde ellos puedan ver los programas que nosotros estamos brindando para ellos, no. Para los teens nos sugirieron ser social media posts, ya sea Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, escuelas, igual para niños en escuelas. So they also talked to us about was inclusion at libraries, how we have to focus on, so the mission for the libraries is for the library to be a welcome, welcoming, enjoyable, safe place for the community. And while the vision for the library is to provide evolving technology to advertise activities, be able to have those, like Laura mentioned, those advertising available to all the community, seniors, children and teens. It's also the possibility to have literacy available for everybody that's interested and programming for all ages, because I know most of the times, programming in libraries are focused towards children and teens, and we get to forget the adults and the seniors. So one of our goals, coming back from the training, is to do more programming for seniors and adults as well. As the library, our responsibility is to provide staff with the proper trainings. They did talk to us about a couple of trainings that staff can take to be trainers and to be able to train the community, so that's something we're really interested. Another thing is the funding is super important to be able to do all these activities, whether it's from grants, fundraisers, friends of the library, and to look for resources available outside our community, since our community is really small, we tend not to have many resource opportunities, but if you connect with libraries from out of state or programs outside of state, they're more than willing to come down to our community and teach our community about the activities available. Algunos de los programas que nos mencionaron ellos fueron dos programas que los veo muy interesantes y que pueden funcionar muy bien en nuestra comunidad. Uno de ellos es Sun Sounds of Arizona, es un programa con personas que no pueden ver o que tienen problemas para agarrar un libro o personas con Alzheimer. Es un programa te brinda radios o que tienen una estación de radio especial donde ellos tienen su estación de noticias, tienen revistas, tienen libros, entonces para que las personas pues que no pueden ver o no pueden leer el papel físico, tengan esa oportunidad en casa de tener ese paquet, ese radio o una Alexa donde ellos puedan pues estar leyendo o no estar entretenidos. Otro programa es Arizona State Braille, es material para embraille, son libros, son legos y son revistas para niños, entonces que podemos tener, nosotros podemos aplicar para tenerlos en la library y también brindar la información a las personas para que puedan tenerlo en casa también. Entonces es algo que, no tenemos ese material en la biblioteca y es algo que podemos incluir y sería mucha ayuda para la comunidad. So another, like I mentioned, trainings for staff is really important, and we're really grateful that we have gotten the opportunity to attend all these trainings throughout this year, and well, it's important for us to get those trainings and connect with other libraries so we can know what's going on around the state. Like I mentioned, being a small community, most of the times we don't have those resources, so I have never heard of the Sun, Sun of Sounds program, or that the Arizona State of Congress would lend us books for the people that are hard to see. So they are going to come down to our community to train our staff so our staff can be able to provide those services to the community, and being part that we're in the border and we have a lot of patrons that are from Mexico, they are going to get that opportunity as well. So well, trainings is a really important part of bringing everything down to the community. Otra cosa que se me olvidó mencionar ahorita, el programa de radio es en inglés y en español, y están viendo cómo admitir otros idiomas también. En parte de nuestro training fue hacer un proyecto que presentamos toda la semana y presentamos el día final. Nosotros nos enfocamos pues en una de las necesidades que tiene nuestra comunidad es que no tenemos educación, colegios o universidades cerca aquí. Entonces todos nuestros estudiantes que se gradúan de high school tienen pues que viajar fuera de la ciudad. Entonces nosotros, nuestro proyecto era un free Associate's of Arts degree at the library, so entonces nosotros podemos colaborar con una universidad para poder tener un Associate's of Arts degree aquí, y nosotros brindar el espacio, que sería la biblioteca, y brindarles pues todo el material gratuito, no, ya sea pues computadoras, libros, todo lo que se llegue a necesitar pues para que tengan ese degree. Y nos enfocaríamos en los estudiantes que van saliendo de la high school, y solo tendríamos 20 lugares disponibles. Y qué más? No, también hicimos, como si lo fuéramos a presentar, teníamos nuestro poster, nuestro social media post, el infographic, cuáles son las, ¿cómo se dice? Estadísticas. Las estadísticas, cuáles son los beneficios de terminar ese proyecto y qué beneficios tendría ese proyecto tenerlo aquí en la ciudad. So going back to, this was like our homework for the whole week, like Laura mentioned, so it was just like, what if you got like a grant, a big grant, and what would you do in your community? So we made up a university, so our university was Arizona Valley University. We made up a university and we put our own terms, so it's something that would be, everybody was amazed by our homework project because, well, it's never been seen in any of the libraries. So we made up a mascot as well, so our mascot is Go Dinos, because we have the dinosaur outside. But that was our homework, and like Laura mentioned, we had to present it to the community, and we had to do everything as if it were true.
Okay, that's good.
Well, our first year is completed, this is a three-year course, so next year would be our second year, and third year we graduate with the certificate of completing this training, and while we have the pictures of our certificates down there. And that's it. I don't know if you guys have questions?
Let me start with Brian.
Yeah, one question on your Arizona Library report. You listed LSTA grants, what is that?
So the LSTA grant is one of the biggest grants that the Arizona, yes, Arizona Library gives it to the libraries, and that's why we were doing this project, is like if we were awarded that grant, what would we do with the money?
Uh huh, okay. That's all, thank you.
Jerry?
Good report, Diane.
Your microphone, Jerry?
I'm interested in knowing more about the Sun Sounds program when you get more information.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Jerry?
No.
Marva?
Is it on?
Yes.
I just have a question about the Associate of Arts degree. It's a two-year degree, and is, are the hours acceptable to further education?
So the way we planned it out was it was going to be an undergraduate degree, two years, and it was going to be a hybrid classes offered with flexible days and hours. For them to be able to maintain in the program, if this were to ever happen in the future, would be a two-year commitment to the library as well, with community service during the summer, so they can add to their degree program. And then the library, of course, would lend out all the books, the hotspots, the laptops.
So if someone wanted to go on and graduate in library science and come back and work in the library, that would be great.
Yes, but we did do it for recent high school students, so that was one of the requirements for, it was just recent high school county residents.
But I just want to make one thing clear here, we have our own community college and we have our own university here though too, okay? This is just something that they're doing on the side, and I don't want the public to be construed or anything like that.
No, no, it was a made-up program for our homework.
I just want to make sure that that's clear, because I was a little confused and I told Daniza, Laura's presentation is inaccurate here, and then she told me, and then I understood.
No, it was part of our homework. The way it worked was they told us, okay, your library got the grant, what would you do with it? Everything's made up, it's just an idea, other libraries presented similar things to this, but everything's, it's not real.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for the public though too, to make sure that's, there's no confusion there. Okay, Marva, anything else?
That's all.
Ed?
No, I just support the idea, but also on your comment, our local community college credits earned towards the two-year degree are also applicable for the four-year degree either at the U of A or any other, two other state universities, or any other universities. So it's good that the focus is local, starting with a particular area with libraries that can work with it and that's being brought up. My concern though is, we're going to have a discussion on item five, but were there any issues raised at the institute for banning books in libraries at all?
No.
Because I got a call about that this week by a local library cardholder, and the issue in itself is very public nationally, and I'm glad to hear that from Daniza that we haven't had that impact here locally and in our library system, but yet it's still a public issue, and seeing what needs to be done and how to respond to it. But I'm glad that it did come up at the institute. Thank you.
Brianna?
Is that Sun Sounds of Arizona only offered to like libraries, or is it something that anybody can go in and like? Es un programa que está abierto al público, es un programa que está abierto al público y cualquier persona puede aplicar a ellos. Solo que nosotros nos gustaría tenerlo aquí en la biblioteca también para ofrecerlo. Y si tenemos flyers de cómo contactarlos nosotros en la biblioteca por si están interesados. Thank you.
Juanita?
Thank you for this report. I had a question about interacting with other libraries. You're able to do that with staff from other libraries when you attend the various workshops, etc. Do you have a plan or some ideas of how you will continue to maintain contact with staff from other libraries?
Yeah, so for this particular training, it's a three-year course, like I said, so next year it'd be the same, same group, excluding the ones that graduated this year. And for the other trainings we've had, we do have like a chat with the emails, so we do have everybody on the emails, and then that's how we communicate with each other, and then our business cards, and we do stay connected. And we were, in our project, we had one of the librarians from Camp Verde, and we talked to them about our celebration, and they're going to come down to look at our library. So we do stay connected.
Anna?
I really liked your presentation and I liked your homework project, and my suggestion is to work with Brian Nelson from Pima Community College here in Nogales, in Santa Cruz County. And your project talks about starting with teenagers. One of the things a lot of people don't realize is that our students can start going to Pima at age 16, and I know that you have your computers set up, and if you start that program, we could get our young people in school before they even graduate, into the college system before they even graduate, which would be really good. Another thing that we're working on, which would partner with this and Brian, is a Future Teachers of Santa Cruz County group, and we want to work with middle school and high school students within our community to get them into, of course, the middle schoolers and some high schoolers couldn't take courses, but we have a great shortage of teachers in our community, and a bunch of retired teachers around here. But I liked your homework and your Associate's degree, and I suggest that you talk to Brian, and please include me in the conversations to get, you know, kids into the Future Teachers Program and into Pima Community College while they're still in high school. Thank you.
It was nice when you go to these conferences, especially when you bring back things to help our local disabled individuals, because sometimes our community seems to put aside the disabled, the concerns and the needs that they have, so that this Sun Sounds and the Braille is an excellent program, at least it's a resource where people can go to the library, and then you can network, and you know that there's these resources to help individuals like that, and I think that's a big plus in your attendance there, and I hope you continue to provide these grant opportunities that you apply for so that you can participate in these programs. And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got it, Denise?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to go back to item one on the agenda, security issues. Lieutenant Bermulis.
On the update, there was a suspect that we believe might have fit the description with the video, but it didn't turn out to be that subject. So the one that actually burglarized the library is still outstanding.
Okay, so you're still looking for somebody then?
Yes, we're still looking for someone, as of right now, it's inactive until we identify somebody through the video. It's still going to be inactive.
Okay. Thank you, Lieutenant Bermulis. Does anybody have any questions for Lieutenant Bermulis on the subject matter?
What? Something?
What is it that? Yeah, uh huh. Go ahead, ask him.
So I have a question. There was an incident at the library with a gentleman that had a dog in the library and said it was a service dog. So when the officers responded, nothing was resolved, they said that they were going to get back to me to see the protocols and what could staff do pertaining this situation. Do you know if they figured out what can be done?
I'm not aware of the incident, I wasn't made aware of it, but it's a service dog, so I would imagine that it would be up to the library staff to see what their protocol is for service dogs.
Yeah, because, well, it wasn't a service dog, but he claimed it was, so we have a big sign in the front that says no dogs allowed except for service animals. So when officers responded, they didn't know how to handle the situation, so they said that they would get back to me to see what can be done and how the library can cooperate with the officers to have like a set plan, but they never got back to me.
So Lieutenant, in essence, what is the definition, the legal definition of a service dog, is what she's asking for, if you could provide that, because anybody is walking, anybody and everyone is going to be walking into the library that says this is a service dog. So they need your help to provide the legal definition to your officers and to them, so they can say, no, this is not, you have to provide these documents for it to be a service dog.
Yeah, and I'll definitely research it come the next meeting, and we'll see what we could do about that, but this is the first time I was made aware of this issue. But yeah, I will research it, and if there is some document that says this is a certified service dog, then hopefully the next time they'll, we could educate them and say, no, you actually have to have this with you if you want to come in and use our library. But again, like I said, if that is an issue, then the library staff would have to make a protocol or put some signs there saying, you could, service animals are okay, but they have to, you have to provide proof that it's a service dog.
Maybe it's defined by ARS and they can put a sign that says according to ARS whatever.
Yeah, and I'll research that and see how exactly you can prove that it is a service dog.
So we had a situation like that at the University of Arizona a couple of years ago, and what the legal department came up with is as long as a service dog has like a harness on it that says service dog and training, it has to be, there's no documentation, it's just, it's just, you know, that says it's a service dog in training, and I know the person that you're talking about is of little funds, and so I'm sure that he would not be able to pay to get his service dog trained. But according to the U of A, what happened there was, that's all they need is a little jacket thing that says service dog and training.
Thank you, Anna. Lieutenant, thank you very much for coming back and giving us the update, and then we look forward to... And then we look forward to hearing from you at our next meeting in August as to the legal definitions. And Daniza, if there's any problems that come up, make sure that Lieutenant Bermudez knows what's going on. Because he's our, he's the relations for us with the department.
A quick email or a phone call would.
Okay. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to item four on the agenda, the Centennial Sculpture, a Nubie Gallery in Tubac, Anna Doan and Effie Williams. Daniza?
Board members, I now direct you to Anna Doan and Effie Williams for their presentation on the Centennial Sculpture.
Anna?
So I'd like to introduce Effie Williams from the Nubie Gallery and it's, and Sculpture Garden in Tubac. And so I'm, I'm going to let you go ahead and do your presentation. And then, and then I'll just fill in the.
Ms. Williams? Could you, yes, uh huh. Rest it.
Okay. There is an email with pictures of other sculptures that Gary Lee Price does. He's got a whole series of sculptures called Learning. It's a lot of books. He's, does a lot of installations around the world at libraries, which you can see online. This particular statue is called In Between Innings. It's 27 inches high. They're bronze. I'm not sure of the edition number on this one. They are made to be permanently installed. They are, have anchor hooks on the bottom of them. The artist is a local, as in local to Arizona. He lives up in the Phoenix area. I think it's Buckeye. He does a lot of installations himself. He will come down and do, when you do the installation, if you choose one of his statues. He's also been known to gift a smaller version for fundraising purposes. I can't say that he will do that in every instance. It's mostly with the monumental ones, but again, he's a very generous man. They do come in smaller sizes. They start at nine inches. They go up to life size. What else can I tell you?
Go ahead and start the conversation.
Okay, so let me, let me just fill in a few of the blank, but have a seat, have a seat, yeah. That was great. Thank you so much. And thank you for bringing it in. You know, it was heavy. So, so what I created from talking to Kim and that also works at the gallery is that in the letter that we would send out to the community, it would be asking for, it could be either or. If we were to buy the little one and have the big one, which is, this is like 5,700, 5,300, and then the small one is about 1,000. So let's say, then it would be 6,300 that we would have to collect to pay for what we spent on the small one and raffle it off and send this letter, it's just a draft, to the community and community members, asking for either donations or for them to participate in the raffle. And the raffle would be the small image. And as I looked at the different images and representing the 2023, I just think it's important to not be gender specific. And so this was the one that I found that could be either or, you know, either a boy or a girl. The other, there's one in front of the Utah library system that is definitely a boy and a girl and then a maybe in the middle, you know? And, and I think it's, you know, like the beginning of this century that we are looking at, at gender ambiguous youth so that they feel represented. And I think, like within my draft, I'm asking, I can tell people that they want information, they would talk to the library director and they could put her phone number there and her email address.
Okay. Juanita? Okay. Brianna? Ed?
Yes. A raffle idea would be a good effort in reaching out to the community to, for contributions. And based on that, also offerings by local entities that could help libraries secure grants for the figures would be a good idea and a good example. I would only ask for a complement of a family figures. If the artist could bring it together and like Anna is saying, not being gender specific, but I would see more of a focus of a family unit.
Okay.
For books in libraries. That would be my only, and then just extend it out to the public and see what type of response we get.
Anna, you want to respond?
So there's a whole website and Effie brought it up on her phone right now. So there's a whole website of his works. And there are other works of artists in other states. I think, you know, that would not be the Tubac Nubie Gallery. But I, I think because it's a county celebration, that I think we should stay in the county. And there are several, you know, on his website that you could choose from. And we haven't chosen this one. This is an example. I was actually there this weekend after talking to Kim and I was looking in their window and I saw that one. I said, I think they're taking it, you know? So I was real excited.
Okay. Thank you. Marva?
Of the sculptures that Connor had sent to us and printed, I think most of us had agreed, we really liked this one. And I think it's very appropriate for our library and our community. Thank you.
Jerry?
I think this is a good example, a good one, because, you know, girls play softball and baseball. So I think that was a good point you made. I did have a question. I don't really understand, there's a smaller one for $1,000 and that would be something to promote the raffle or this idea, right? And how big is the small one then?
Nine inch.
And this one is 27. Okay, $1,000. And I, I think I read in here that, you know, there's money budgeted by the city for the Centennial. And there's a, there's a comment about some of those funds could be used for this.
As a part of the fundraising, yeah.
Yeah. And then one other thought, maybe if there's going to be a raffle, it could be combined with the Jim Click raffle. And this would just be an addition, you know? You could win a, a new, brand new $50,000 vehicle or you could win this $1,000.
Yeah, no, this is a separate deal.
Well, for the library.
No, it's a library, yeah. But this one, well, when we finish off with the discussion, this will be something that will be the responsibility of Daniza. The other funds of Jim Click go to the friends of the library.
Right.
And they would have to appropriate any funds that they wanted to for this.
So.
So this fundraising, these ones.
You wouldn't want to get too many, too many donations, is that?
Yeah, this is just going for donations and just for the Centennial project, that's all.
Yeah, only, we don't want, we don't want.
Okay, Brian?
A couple of comments. As this statue is presented, you can see it standing on the table. I don't think your expenses will be limited to $5,300 because you'll need to build a pedestal or something to, to raise it up. So raise your image a little bit and your expenses for one. Because the other question I have is the distribution of your letter. It's a good letter, but how are you going to get it out to the public? Are you going to mail it to everybody or what's your thoughts about distribution?
Anna?
Yes, I, I'd hope that, because the other thing I'm asking here is for people to share or give us or donate something that we can put in the time capsule that's representative of Santa Cruz County in the last 100 years. So yeah, we would send it out to different entities and hope, because we're not the only ones that would know what to put in the time capsule. But if we put it out to the community, so it's, so we're asking for two things. Either a donation, three things. Either a donation, participation in the raffle, and also ideas of items to put in the time capsule.
Okay, so the letter, are you going to mail it?
Yes.
Postal service to every resident in the county or businesses or both?
Yeah, if, if you can get these addresses for me and contacts for me.
Let me just jump in here, Brian. I don't, that's not a, through the city, through all the city residents, we can ask Daniza to ask the water department to put it in the water bill.
Oh.
For everybody to put it in the water. So when they send out the water bill to everybody, the letter will be in there. For the county, if they send out anything or for a water district, something like that, we can go ahead and ask them. But we're trying, I think it'll be too cost prohibitive to go ahead and send out individual mailings to everybody. Or we can put it out and advertise it in the Nogales International, in the Patagonia newspaper, which I enjoy reading a lot. We can do things like that also, which would be a lot, a lot cheaper. But we can get the word out to everybody there. Because the Patagonia paper on the eastern part of the county is read by all the people on the eastern part of the county. And, and, yeah. Okay, hold on, let me finish with Brian.
That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Now, back to you, Anna. You wanted to say something right now or did you say it?
Um, yeah.
Okay, Juanita now.
About the, the raffle tickets, I think to Jerry's proposal that Jim Click would probably not like to have another prize tied in with his prizes. I don't think we could do that. And selling them at the same time, you know, to the same people at the same time.
I agree.
Might make them only buy one of the raffle tickets. So, and we don't know the price on that yet, do we? Have we determined a price for the raffle?
On this one? Well, if we're talking about 5,300 and then we're, oops, I'm sorry. So if we're talking about 5,000, 5,300 for the statue. And let's see, 1,000 for the 9,000, for the nine inch statue. There's 6,300 and then we divide it into maybe 200 raffle tickets or whatever we want.
Oh, okay.
And then just determine what the, the price would be. And hopefully the city would do the installation, just as Brian was saying, you know, to make sure it's secure and in a safe place.
The, the city is going to take care of making the pit and the container, correct, Daniza? To install out there and to get whatever we agree upon, the statue on top of it, to make sure that everybody knows for 100 years, there's something here that needs to be opened up 100 years from now. All right? Okay. Go ahead.
Going back to Brian's comment, I do want to remind them, we do have the Friends of the Library. I mean, the goal of the Friends of the Library is to go out to the community, get them with information about the library. We do have our Fourth of July event coming up. That's the biggest event up in the county and the city. Set up a booth. We do have the Fourth of July in Tubac if the, the letter is ready, of course. We do have our literacy bus as well that goes out to the communities and goes out to outreach programs.
Okay, thank you, Denise.
One more thing.
Juanita?
Yes. Is there a Plan B if we don't earn the 6,300 to pay for it? Will you go to the Centennial funds? What will you do?
The plan, well, first of all, correct me if I'm wrong. There is a consensus among the board members to make a commitment to this statue. Is that correct? Okay. So as the chairman of the board, then I'm going to direct Daniza to go ahead based sometime at the July or no later than early August to issue a purchase order in that amount so we can secure this, okay? Now, we're going to continue to sell these tickets and we're going to ask for donations. Whatever we get, we get, she'll deposit it into her, her account to deviate the expense of the original $5,300. I still don't understand what the purpose of the little statue is. I, I don't want to spend $1,000 for a little statue. What's the purpose of that?
So that would, that's what we would be raffling off, is the little statue.
Oh, so that's, that's the thing, okay. Well, then we'd have to use the first $1,000 for the little statue. And I would hope then that the little statue on that one, that the Friends could go ahead and put up that guarantee. And then when we get that first $1,000, Daniza will reimburse the Friends for that $1,000. So that's what we're going to do then. We, what's that, Marva?
I think we could possibly go without the, the nine inch statue entirely and ask people for donations to pay for that one to be on the time capsule.
You don't like?
Am I not understanding?
No. Do you like the, the nine inch statue, the?
No, I don't like.
I don't like it either.
I don't think it's necessary.
I think we should just ask for donations for this statue. And that's how, I'm in agreement with you. I think that, we're overdoing it now.
I agree.
Let's just ask for donations for this. We're going to make a commitment to purchase this statue and house it in the library immediately. And this is what's going to be on top outside for our Centennial project and it's here. So that way the city has access to it to start making it, as Mr. Vanderbilt says, secure. Because it's got to be there, that statue's got to be there for 100 years. And none of us are going to be around to make sure that it's there for 100 years. So we got to do everything that we can. But I'm in agreement with Marva. I don't want to spend time on the nine inch statue. Let's just make a commitment to this one, house it at the library and then start asking for funds to deviate the costs.
Mr. Vanderbilt?
That's what we asked for $20,000 for, besides everything else for, for this. And I think this is in our price range. Okay.
If, if I can add something, if you want to raffle something, it could be something less than $1,000. It could be like a laptop, a tablet.
I don't think we want to get into too much of the raffle.
We have enough with the raffles, with the Jim Click and I have other people, you know, everybody's doing the Jim Click. So let's just focus on this thing and just with the letter, sending out a letter, everybody taking the letter to your friends, to your business associates and this, and see what we can get, okay? I think we, we can do, do fine in that manner. Okay, now if there's any agreements or disagreements, now is the time to speak. So we're going to start with Mr. Vanderbilt.
Well, not to, I agree for my vote, but I think some thought should be given to recognition to donors. How will they be recognized? And in, in terms of this? So if you, if you got somebody contributed $500 a business or whomever, how will that individual and or entity be recognized?
Good point. Let me do, let me have Daniza do some research on that, Brian, and see like if anybody donates $500 or more, this is your permanent recognition on it. That's a good point. Anything else, Brian?
That's all.
Jerry?
Will there possibly be funds available from the Centennial Committee? The funds that have already been pretty much agreed upon from, from the city? You know, there was a.
Want to respond to that? Okay. We don't have any funds right now. We'll have to wait until she gets her budget intact and everything, then we can go from that. Have we spent anything? We've only talked about the, the day that we're having, October the 5th. It is what we want to have during that time. But it's not going to be as what we had at the last time, as formal. But there'll be, there will be some expenses, but she already has a tentative budget to make sure we're with that because it'll be less that amount with that and what we get in.
Okay, because that could really help.
Yes.
You know, telling people we already have.
That's correct.
Certain amount, you know, a couple thousand dollars from the city or whatever. And we just need to.
Your analysis is correct, Jerry. That's correct. Marva?
No.
Ed?
I don't think it would hurt to have a roster of any contributions that we get, be at 500 or be at $5. But maintain the list in relation to the model. And I think that that model, since we're looking at that model for a 100-year period, I think it should be in an, in its own enclave in the library rather than having it on the outside. I think having it on the outside puts it out for public abuse. And let's just face it, you know, it happens. You have it inside the library with the literature that explains the Centennial celebration and how that figure will go into the future. and how that figure will go into the future, one hundred years, and the names of the contributions for the donations.
I'll have, I'll have Daniza make a presentation for our August meeting as to, so she has time to meet with the engineer and everything as a, a cost-benefit analysis on to the outside versus placing it on the inside. And she'll put that down. She'll report on that in August, okay, Ed? All right, Brianna?
I just wanted to make a comment to what he said about recognizing everybody who, like, you know, participates or contributes to this. It doesn't have to be the biggest. You know, a lot of us know that this community can be at the highest of the highest as far as wealth or to the, like, very lowest. So I think maybe considering a little plaque or something with just a name or having some type of description inside the library that, you know, when people walk in, they can see that, a list of people that contributed to that or just so they can have that recognition.
Brianna? Juanita?
Yes, on that list, you can ask them if they want to be anonymous or if they want to be recognized. So I think that's a good idea. Um, I'm, I'm on board for the statues.
Okay, Anna?
So I will change the letter. I'll, I'll work with Daniza to change the letter to remove the part about the small statue. And, and then, I too really appreciate the, the idea of recognizing the people that contribute. We can also put that list in the time capsule. You know, because a hundred years. And if they, you know, if they have a picture of themselves or whatever, with the time capsule to put in the time capsule, that would be great. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Mrs. Williams, Daniza will get together with you to make some kind of commitment. She can't, the only formal commitment that she can make to you legally is with a purchase order. That purchase order can't be issued until probably mid-July or a little later. But we want you to know that there is a commitment. The board here agrees with it. So you can work with her and all that, all of that, okay? Okay, well, just to make sure, okay? All righty, then, I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda. If there's not any objections or any further discussion. Okay, let's move on to item five on the agenda. Book banning discussion. Juanita?
Uh, yes, um, as Ed pointed out, according to the American Library Association, there were seven hundred and twenty-nine challenges that occurred in 2021. And to seven hundred and twenty-nine, that was library, school, and university materials. It's school libraries that bear the brunt of this action. And there were one thousand five hundred and ninety-seven individual titles, books that were challenged. So, and challenges are increasing. I wasn't aware that we had a policy, and I see that Daniza has. Did you develop this or discover this? Discovered, yes.
So it's in place?
Okay, well, I'm so glad to, to, to see that we do actually have a policy in place. I researched with the Phoenix Library, Cochise County, and Pima County. And the librarian at Cochise County, the director, did send me some information, which I'll gather and, and share with the board. Because I was thinking if we wanted to expand on this policy with a few more details about the, the, the committee that's appointed. Generally, they appoint a committee when you have a book challenge. You appoint a committee involving staff or library board. And in this case, I see that the library board is, you can appeal to the library board. And in some of the others, rather than appealing to the library board, you, you appeal to the, in this case, the city. They administer our library. So I think if we wanted to work on that, have a committee to work on refining this policy that we already have, we could, we could move forward on that and address perhaps more specifically some of the things that may come up. And do we have a form? Did you find, you didn't find? Okay, I have samples of forms that we could perhaps create. And I, I assume that, that the director would come up with this, and we, we could help with that. Okay, yeah, I would like to. I think it's important that we have lots of details in place so that we know how to address this issue, which in this system has never come up, to my knowledge.
I agree completely.
Okay, Marva?
I was just saying it's a wave of the future, so we need to look at it. It seems to be a wave of the future, so we do need to be aware of that. Thanks, Juanita.
Okay, Ed?
The thing that concerns me the most is that it has been, the issue of banning books has been totally politicized nationally because of the trash that's coming out of Florida. Florida is setting the pace for other states, extremist states, to take positions in this. And I think it's ridiculous. I think the library board and its sponsoring agents should be able to determine the type of books that the library can have and cannot have, and work from there, instead of making it a political issue to ban any particular type of, of matter that comes out and impacts the public library system. I just don't agree with what's coming out and proposed. And I'm glad that thus far, from Daniza's input, we haven't had an issue for us here in our system. And let's just keep thinking positive about books in our library and our relationship with our patrons.
Have you concluded, Ed?
Yes.
Okay, let me back up to Marva.
That's exactly why we need some guidelines in place. That's all.
Okay, Brianna? Uh, Juanita, we covered you. Anna?
I happened to do a presentation last week with the Rio Rico Rotary Club, and that question came up. And what I explained to them, because of the Books Save Lives books that teachers, community members, parents request for their classrooms, for their homes, because those two hundred dollars in books that they get are for them and for their improvement and to get kids to read. The goal is to get children to read. And so they seem to be satisfied, that one person seemed to be satisfied. But what I said is that I, you know, my backup is the Arizona Library Association, which is?
Arizona State?
Arizona State, yeah. And then the, I work directly with Books for Classrooms in Pima County, where adults vet the books. And, and then students vet books also. Because the goal is that students read and become readers and become learners. And so we have to look, you know, I, I shortly read this one, you know, about what is our goal when it comes to books and reality. And I know that in other places, one person decides to throw a book out, and the book is thrown out. So I like the idea within the policy, you know, to have a committee and, and, and have specific reasons. And I think we have to back our, our, our reasons up with research, history, and, and again, just to look at what is our goal? That our community become readers and that become enlightened, especially in a rural area like ours. You know, the connection to the outside world is, is books. You know, and so I'm, I'm definitely like that, that Daniza, you brought up this procedure. And it has to work so that not just one person comes up with a crazy idea. And like I said, you know, for Books Save Lives, it's Books Save Lives. And because of our meeting with the Rotary Club, we changed the bottom line. Instead of empowering our communities to read, it's Books Save Lives, one page at a time. And I really like that. So, thank you.
Okay. Based on the consensus that I hear among the board members, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to, as the chairman of the board, I'm going to appoint Juanita as the chairman of a three-member committee to look over our Policy 202 under the title of Library Materials Complaint Procedures, to enhance that, that policy and bring it back to us. And if there's any two other members of this board that are interested in it, please see Daniza after, and she'll put this down on the agenda for formal approval of the committee. Okay? All right, so now we're going to move on to item six on the agenda. Library Friends Update. Ed?
The only thing I need to add is that Friends will be meeting after this meeting. And in particular, we'll be working on our, revising our bylaws and working with that. And that's, that's the only real issue that we're going to be doing right now.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
No comments, thank you.
Jerry?
No comments.
Marva?
No, thank you, Ed.
Brianna? Juanita? Anna? Let's move on to item seven on the agenda. Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Minutes of May the 24th, '23. Marva?
Um, the minutes are ready for a motion to approve.
We're ready for your motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Brian to approve the minutes of May the 24th, 2023, as presented and recommended by the secretary. A second, the motion was seconded by Ed Delsey. We're under now discussion. Under discussion, I abstain from the voting because of my absence from the, at the last meeting. Objections? Motion carries. We'll now move on to item six. Board Reports: Current Events, Summaries. Summary must be brief, and there cannot be any proposal, discussion, deliberation, or legal action taken. Brian?
Nothing, sir.
Jerry?
Uh, this morning, I was at the library, and I had the opportunity to meet the new employee, Paul Pablo. And I, I did ask to, I commented that I was going to use the restroom, and I was told it was out of order. So I wanted to get more information about that. I was coming to City Hall, you know, after, after being at the library, so it was no big deal. But last year, I know I had a similar situation, and I went to Food City. But I, I don't know if, if they're out of order or if it's just, you know, a concern about the clemency or, so I do ask that question.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Marva?
Well?
Ed?
Nothing to add.
Brianna? Juanita?
The Cruiser, driven by Brianna, visited the Sanida Library, was a very lively visit. And they had several children explore the, the bus. And it was for the launch of the summer reading program.
Oh, good, very good, nice. Anna?
So, I was waiting for Brianna to say something, but I'm really excited that Brianna and Daniza are coordinating so that for community events, the mobile library, the Santa Cruzer, will be available so that adults and children can get library cards. So, life is good.
I also attended at the library a couple of weeks ago a science lab presentation that was made for the little kids sitting on those little chairs right there. There was about twenty little kids there, if I'm not mistaken, with their parents. They were all accompanied by their parents, and it was a wonderful activity. This guy explained different processes of, of science with a lab and experience, hands-on, audience participation. And I thought it was very good, Daniza. You should have more of those for the little kids to participate in. Okay, let's go down now to item seven. Library Directors Report: Current and Upcoming Events at the Library, Staffing, Rio Rico Library Assistant and Tubaq Library Assistant, Activities Program, Summer Reading Program, and Teen Camp. Daniza?
Chairman and Board Members, I would like you to, I would like to introduce to you our new Rio Rico Library Assistant. He's right here, gentleman Juan Pablo Artana. He's been with us two and a half weeks now, and he has been amazing. He's learned circulation. He's taken on children's activities. He's even helping out with the teens. And he's just always, like, you see him right now with that smile, and he's been wonderful. I've just been getting comments from patrons, from staff themselves. And he's just an asset to the library system. He has been trained in circulation. This week, he's learning cataloging and all the intricate little details of what goes into the book selections, how they're cataloged. Because the children's cataloging is different than the adult, when we catalog the books for adults. So he's learning all those details. The following week, he will be an interlibrary loan, just in case, you know, you never know when somebody's absent and we need to get interloan, interloan, interlibrary loan material out to the branches or to other libraries in the, in the state. So he will be learning that, too. And he will be ready to go to Rio Rico, either late July or early August. So, welcome, Juan Pablo.
Welcome, Juan Pablo.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
And I will introduce or reintroduce all of you to Bailey Garcia, who will now be our Tubaq Library Assistant in August per the new grant, I mean, the new fiscal year. So Bailey will be here at the August meeting, and I will reintroduce her. And now I will pass this on to Denise, so she can talk about, more about the summer reading program and the upcoming teen camp.
So our summer reading program started, I believe it was two weeks ago. They run Thursdays. Like Mr. Varona mentioned, our last program was a scientist, went great. The last, last week, it was a foam party. I don't know if you guys saw the pictures on Facebook or the videos. So they were set outside, and there was just a bunch of foam, and kids were just running around and having fun. Rio Rico had the foam party as well. Sonita is doing great with their summer reading program. Tomorrow is the ending for the summer reading programs for the libraries. And we do have, like, a surprise for them for the ending of the program. They're gonna receive treats, and they're gonna have prizes and their certificates. This year is gonna be the first year that the library does a teen summer camp. We are gonna collaborate with the Circles of Peace Organization, so it's gonna be with them. And this program will start mid-July. We're still working on the dates, but we are planning to do it a whole week, or two-week program for the teens before they start school. And we're really excited about them, because it's our first teen event. Teen, and then we actually want to make it so the community knows that we have a teen area. Not many people know that we do have a teen area, so we wanna make that known to the community.
Is that complete your request? Okay. We're now gonna move on to future agenda items. Anna?
Nothing.
Juanita?
Well, you already mentioned the book challenge.
I already did.
Okay.
She's got that on there. Brianna? Ed?
I'll update Friends' activities.
Okay. Marva?
Nothing new.
Jerry?
Nothing.
Brian?
I was just curious, sir, if the recommendation of the board to buy the sculpture should not be a formal motion, rather than just a consensus.
We can put it down on the agenda for August for formal approval. Have her wait there, because we, we meet at the early part of August, and then they can issue the purchase order after that, or put it into the process to do that. We'll put it down for a formal approval.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August the ninth, at ten thirty, right here. Oh. Also, Mr. Vanderbilt always sends me a little email, so he won't have to send me a little email for August. But we will have the election of officers according to the bylaws for August. Anything else? So we got the date of our next meeting, it's August the ninth. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at eleven forty AM. Motion by Anna, seconded by Juanita, that this meeting is adjourned at eleven forty. The meeting is adjourned. Could you get those holes, like, I'm sorry?